Welcome to the January 28, 2020 Regular Meeting of the City of Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is composed of nine residents appointed to serve their committee. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone or any other device that might disrupt this meeting, please either switch it to silent mode or turn it off. At this time, I ask the Planning Commission Recording Secretary Kathy Sarnicki to conduct the roll call.
Mr. Apidion?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Faison? Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Parakis?
Here.
Mr. Ramon?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Hudson? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apidion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidion?
Yes.
The next item is approval of the minutes from the January 14, 2020 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Lambert? A second? Mr. Ramon? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidion?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Next item is public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on that, on an item that's not on the agenda? Yes, please.
Good evening. Ava Slindes, sir, from Ottawa. I just wanted to know, I haven't heard anything about it, but I just wanted to know if the planning commission's annual report, onsite plan reviews and zoning ordinance amendments is available for citizens to perusal.
It's, do you want to get that one?
It's on the agenda this evening.
It is?
Yes.
Part of the packet.
I'm sorry I didn't see it. I'm very embarrassed if that's true.
Well, don't be embarrassed, but it's, so it's available online for download. And if anyone has any issues downloading it, please contact the planning department.
I was going to suggest, since I didn't realize that it had been published, I was going to suggest that, and hopefully that you might add the number of units in any, in any proposal that has to do with housing. And then in aggregate, aggregate tabulation at the end of the year, how many units we have added to the city's population.
It's a good suggestion.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Anyone else in the audience would like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item. It's a public hearing. It's conditional rezoning CRJPLN 2019-001. Proposed MNK Troy 1 LLC conditional rezoning, east side of Rochester Road, south of Shallowdale, Section 14, from R1C, one-family residential, RT, one-family attached residential, and EP, environmental, environmental protection districts, to RT, one-family attached residential, and EP, environmental protection districts. Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you. It's quite a mouthful.
Yes.
I, I do apologize in advance to the planning commission, the public. I do have a rather lengthy presentation. I'll try to move through this as efficiently as possible, but I think it's important to kind of go into some depth and background with regards to this application. Tonight before us is a proposal to rezone two parcels of land that are approximately 3.77 acres in total area. The parcels have split zoning, which I'll go over to in a second, but essentially what the applicant is seeking approval to is rezone two portions of the, of the parcels to RT, which is a one-family residential attached zoning designation. Just for context, the site is surrounded by single-family to the north, east, and west, and to the south is a RT attached similar zoning district to what's being proposed tonight. With regards to zoning, as I noted, the two parcels actually have three different zoning designations as part of them. The northern part is zoned R1C, which is consistent with the zoning to both the north as well as to the east. There is an EP zoning ban, which is located along the easternmost property line of the parcel, and then there's the RT that kind of bifurcates and kind of is in the middle of the two parcels. The planning commission last considered the rezoning application in October of last year, and there was significant discussion with both the planning commission as well as the public, and the discussions with the neighborhood opposition included the reduction of the proposed EP zoning, which is shown here. It's, they, they actually planned to reduce the amount of EP but keep a band of EP zoning along the eastern property line. So there was concern about the reduction of the EP zoning in terms of area, what the use of that proposed EP zoning was going to be, the overall reduction of the open space, and again, the use of the environmental protection zone for detention pond. In addition to the neighborhood opposition heard, there was discussion of the planning commission, which include the intent of what the EP zoning was intended to be used for, the reduction of the EP zoning as whole, as well as the consideration of homeowners who purchase property expecting EP zoning to be in place in perpetuity. Post that meeting, the applicant has gone back and revised their application. They've come back with the proposed zoning. What they're seeking is to rezone the entire two parcels to RT. With part of that, they preserve, they plan to keep a portion of the back rear eastern portion of the site to be an open space preservation easement, and I'll talk about that in a second. Within that open space preservation easement, they propose a dry detention basin with a landscape, 15-foot landscape buffer. They propose established building material steners, including brick and stone. They note that each unit will have a two-car garage with nine guest parking spaces. They will provide additional screen along the southern property line, and they propose no exterior refuse containers, so all of the trash enclosures will be located within the garages of the proposed townhome development. So this is the proposal in front of you. On to the left-hand side is the current zoning. As I noted, it's three different zoning designations. To the right is a proposed rezoning. So they propose to rezone the entire portion of the site to RT, and you can see in the area in green is where they propose to keep an open space preservation area. This is consistent with the current EP zoning, not, not exactly, but consistent with the basic outline of the current EP zoning designation, and within that, again, they would locate the dried detention basin. So this in front of you is a concept plan. Again, this is conceptual in nature only, but this shows what the intent of what the develop would look like if rezoned. So basically what they're intending is to maintain the detention pond within the rear or eastern portion of the site, and again, that noted open space preservation area. We do note that if zoned EP, if the EP section, I'm sorry, was rezoned to RT, they could use the entire density for that, what was EP towards their overall site density, and put the detention pond within that open space preservation area. We do note that the applicant has not identified what the rights and uses, et cetera, are within that open space preservation area, other than the fact they want to use it for their dried detention pond. So essentially, there, we, we look at this as, as though it is a conditional zoning that should be looked holistically. There's really two points of discussion for the planning commission to consider, and one portion is the northern part of the site that's currently zoned R1C, that proposed zoning to RT, and the second part of discussion is that eastern end of the site that's currently EP, that being proposed to RT. So we're going to kind of bifurcate the, these issues and discuss each of them individually. With regards, and I'm going to start with regards to the northern portion of R1C. We've done this presentation a number of times. You've seen this planning commission a number of times of what the intent of the zoning is on Rochester Road. Again, the, the, the planning and zoning for Rochester Road really started in the early or late, late 1990s, and this included amendment of the master plan, and we added medium-density residential along Rochester Road north of Waddles. Again, this is the master plan. This is the future vision of the plan. It wasn't the zoning at the time. In addition, in 2002, we adopted the future land use plan, and we retained the medium-density residential uses, again, along the north side of Rochester Road north of Waddles. In 2008, we adopted the City of Troy master plan, and we established the Rochester Road land use classification, which was a separate classification within the master plan. And within that district, we talked about more intense development at the nodes, and so again, those are the, the, the sites that are the intersection of the major mile corridors. However, in between those nodes, which where this property is located, it's the red dot on the screen in front of you, we talked about low-rise office as well as multifamily uses between those nodes. In addition, we talked about the use of innovative stormwater management. So again, we're reiterating since 1999, the use of multifamily along Rochester Road. Since that time, we've had a number of applications that have, have sought rezoning to RT. Those are outlined in yellow in front of you, so this is not, this proposed rezoning would not be an anomaly with regards to that location on Rochester Road. There are a scattering of RT along Rochester Road, and in fact, just to the south, the property is also zoned RT. So we do note that the city's land use policies have called for medium-density residential along Rochester Road for the last, over the last 20 years. So with regards to that portion that is currently zoned R1C, we do find that that, that portion of site has been master planned for RT for over 20 years, and the rezoning from R1C to RT is consistent with the master plan's designation for the last 20 years of medium-density residential. In addition, we do note the applicant is providing increased setbacks along the northern and eastern property line, which is adjacent to single-family, to provide additional buffer. I know in discussions with the planning commission, and we've received a few letters from applicants, they have some concerns with regards to that setback along the northern and eastern property line, and that's certainly a discussion the planning commission should have, but on its face, we do find that the rezoning to RT is consistent for the, with the master plan for this section of the parcel. Moving on to the eastern portion or the EP zone portion of the property, that's a little bit different discussion. We heard at the last meeting, and we've heard subsequent conversations with regards to what the intent of what that zoning was, what the history of that zoning was, we've heard two different conflicting stories with regards to what the zoning of that is. We find that, that it really is difficult and potentially irresponsible for this planning commission and this city council to try to predict or determine what the city council and planning commission intended 20 years ago. So we, we really think this should be thought of on its face as how it currently stands today and what the intent of the zoning is as today. So we can't confirm what the intent of the EP zoning was back in the day and what the promises were about what would go in with that, go with, go within that EP zoning and what could be used within that EP zoning. So again, we really stress the planning commission and ultimately the city council to really think of the zoning as in its context today and what their implications are today, not what the perceived intent may have been 20 years ago. So essentially, when EP zoning was established, the intent was to serve as a buffer and environmental protection between two divergent land uses, similar to this. You've got multifamily adjacent to single-family. EP zoning in its current form does not allow the overall density to be counted towards lot, towards total density of the site. It does allow for stormwater detention if that detention is utilized in the, as a naturalized manner and utilized as best management practices. Fundamentally, what the applicant tonight is asking for is they're seeking to rezone that portion of EP and use it towards their overall density, but in addition, they also want to use it for their stormwater detention plan. And as we review the stormwater detention, we don't find it to be a naturalized feature, nor do we find it to be really a site amenity that lends to both the benefit of the future residents as well as the adjacent property owners. In addition, the applicant is providing a double row of trees, which again, we don't find that as an adequate buffer between the detention pond and the neighbors to be used as both density purposes as well as dried detention basin. So what we recommend is the planning commission really focus on this in two, in two parts. The first is to discuss the RC portion of zoning. Again, fundamentally, we do find that the site has been zoned, or has been master planned for medium-density residential. We do find that rezoning the portion from R1C to RT is consistent with the master plan. Again, there can be discussions on that proposed setback, et cetera, but we do think on its face, the RT zoning makes sense for that portion of the site. With regards to the EP portion, that's a different discussion the planning commission should have. Again, we do note the applicant is seeking a rezoning from that, from EP to RT to use it for their density calculations, but in addition, they want to use it for their stormwater management. And as shown, we don't feel that the screening as well as the use of that in terms of the layout really blends itself to be a naturalized area that's a benefit to either both the current resident or the future residents of the site as well as the current residents of the adjacent property. So with that, we're open for any questions from the planning commission.
Any questions for our staff? Mr. Hudson?
Brent? I guess, ask the question. The exhibit in the agenda showing a concept of the buildings in there in the stormwater detention, this is part of a conditional rezoning request. If we were to grant that request, and since it's just a concept, they could do something different, couldn't they, with that layout?
So, so, Mr. Hudson, I'll quickly answer that. In addition to the concept plan, they have submitted a number of conditions as part of their rezoning. Those conditions are reflected in part in the concept plan, but yes, if, the concept plan could change provided that they do meet those conditions, and I, I'm trying to find out what page it is in, in the packet with regards to their proposed... So, Mr. Hudson, on page 34 of your packet, in the applicant's application, they list seven different conditions as part of the rezoning. I can read those if, if you'd like, but...
Could you just read the one regarding the, the EP area?
So, "Open space preservation easement shall be provided over the eastern portion of the site in an area equal to that of the EP zoned area, providing a guaranteed 24% open space buffer."
Okay. Ben answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Apidion?
A question for Mr. Carlisle. The last bullet point, it says this area is not, it doesn't provide the naturalized area. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What does a naturalized area look like versus what's being presented in the project?
So as you can see, so the area I'm, I'm speaking of is this dried detention pond. We, the, well, I'll start with, the master plan itself calls for use of best management practice and naturalized features. So use of rain gardens, bio swales, a more landscaped planting system, which actually detains and, and allows for infiltration. This pond is, is, in our opinion, is very utilitarianism. It's, it's, it's a shape of a, of a, you know, it's a rectangular towards shape. There's no natural, there's no indication of any, of any sort of planting in there other than, than turf grass. There's, there's really, it, it, it does not have any sort of natural features that you would want to see in a, that are consistent with best management practices for stormwater. It's a pond that will literally fill up when it rains over a certain amount, and it will outlet as quick as possible.
Okay. There's a follow-up, Ben. Mondarian, I think, at Long Lake and Beach, put in a retention area, one like I've never seen before, landscaped. It looks beautiful.
Mm-hmm.
Could something like that be done in this EP area in this project?
Sure. It would have to be engineered correctly and have to be landscaped accordingly, et cetera, but it could be definitely a site amenity to both, I want to say, a site amenity to serve both the residents of, future residents, but the residents adjacent to it as well.
If something like that was done, would that sort of satisfy some of your concerns you had with the latest projected right now?
It would satisfy our concerns with regards to the use of best management practice in a naturalized system. I think the planning commission still needs to consider the concept, right or wrong, that they're going to, they're trying to attempt to rezone that EP portion for, allow for increased density for the overall site. That's, there's two different discussions as part of that rezoning, but in terms of naturalized stormwater management, yes, that's a much, with much more acceptable practice for, in our opinion, than what's presented in front of you today.
Anyone else? Mr. Lambert?
Thank you. The, on that plan that's on the screen right now, the, the only places where there are a tree screen is on the south side and then on the east side at that one spot. Is there any other screening along the rest of the property line?
So it's, it's not indicated in the, again, this is a concept only, so we haven't seen a detailed landscape plan, but they would be, they would be required to screen along all adjacent property lines to the north, east, as well as the south, because those are, well, not the south, because the south is the same use, but they would be required to screen along the east and the north to meet the adjacent land use qualifications for screening. It's not shown on here, but yes, they would be required to screen. I do find it curious a little bit that they actually screen along the south where it's the two most similar land uses to each other.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I had a quick thought. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Tagle. Do we know, or do you know what the increase in density is by them counting the EP or the, or the detention area?
Yeah, I, I think it's three units. So, it's on page 23 of, of the packet. What we try to do is we compare what the buyright density could be versus what the proposed density. The buyright density right now is they could get a total of 20 units on this site, including the existing R4, I'm sorry, R1C and the RT. If rezoned, including the area of the EP zoning, they could get 32, so it's an increase of 12 units.
I had a quick thought. You know, I thought in the master plan, the Rochester Road area, where's the properties that face or right on Rochester Road, master plan idea was to have a more natural landscaping along there, the, between the concrete street and the buildings themselves was to look more natural as far as more wild-type plantings and things. Is that basically true? Again, if we approved this and they show that green belt, that green belt should look more like something that's in the master plan, not just lawn?
Yeah, the, so the master plan really talks about green infrastructure from a stormwater management standpoint. That certainly could be located in between the sidewalk and the front building face. It could be incorporated as part of landscaping, but there's no, other than what's in the zoning orange, there's nothing in the Rochester Road that specifically talks about landscaping adjacent to Rochester Road, but it's something that the applicant can certainly consider as part of the application.
Very good. Any other questions for staff?
Just for clarification, density, when you say R1C, there's a plus minus four. Why, I mean, what, the four, number four comes from where?
So it's a, it's a total area divided by the, the area per lot, and we got four. I mean, they would have to come in through a site plan process to get that four, but that's just the way we calculate basic density.
So when you say, single-family residential R1C, that means it's one house, right?
One house, but within that area that's zoned, that's currently zoned R... So this area that's outlined that's currently zoned R1C is large enough that could, they could divide it into four lots by area.
That has to be approved first, right?
That would have to come in through a site convenient process with the planning commission.
But, so by right, right now with R1C, I can say it's 17? Is that a right statement?
Well, if, if they come in with a subdivision that meets all the R1C zoning requirements, they're, they're, they have the right to four lots there. So we consider that kind of the buyright would be four lots.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else before we get to the applicant? Yes, Mr. Parakis?
A question for clarification. In the proposed development, they're actually not proposing any structures on the EP area. Even if we rezone it, they're sort of preserving the EP area for the retention pond at this point.
Yeah, yes.
They're mostly using it.
They're, they're rezoning it, and then they're going to put on top of it this thing called this open space preservation easement. Again, we don't know what that means. There's been no specifications of, in terms of what that means, but that is that kind of checkered outline. That is where they're putting that EP, that open space designation. It's consistent with where the area of the EP zoning, it's not 100% in the same lines, but it's consistent, and again, there will be no structures within that open space easement except for there will be the detention pond and some landscaping.
So mainly, it's for recalculation purposes to gain the density further west?
That's, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson. Do we still have EP zoning in our code?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
It, I don't know the full history of it, but it was a way to, it was, it was a tool that was used by the city prior to the allowance of a conditional rezoning. So you could put extra protection on rezonings such as cases like this to protect adjacent property owners, and it, it's probably an outdated tool. It's something that we, we'd be looking at, but it, but it is there, and there are, there are a number of parcels that are zoned EP.
But this petition does not request any EP zoning in this request.
They're trying to get, they're trying to eliminate EP zoning.
Anyone else? Then I'd like the applicant to come up and present their project.
I thought maybe you were going to present for me?
Okay. Good evening. John Thompson with PEA. Thank you for having us tonight. On behalf of MNK Troy 1, we, we'd like to just start with kind of, probably reiterating a lot of what Ben said, but I'll try to make it shorter. So as you'll recall, we presented to the planning commission October 22. Based on feedback from the neighbors and the planning commission, we request to be postponed. So tonight, we're happy to present version 2.0. We think we've answered the neighbors' questions and the planning commission's questions, so, so we have a, so we have a, excuse me, a, a plan that's going to satisfy both the city, the landowner, and the neighbors. Let me start with the conditional voluntary conditions. Based on additional conversations with the neighbors, we've added and amended some of those conditions, so if you, give me a second, I'll pass those out.
Thank you.
Sorry for having to mention. [inaudible] Did you both go over to eat? Do you need another?
No, we, we can share.
We can share.
[inaudible]
Thank you.
Have one more?
No, we're good. We're good.
No, no, I haven't.
So, as you'll see from the conditions that were in the original submittal, we've edited number three. That one included a 15-foot landscape buffer. We're going to make that larger, so I changed that to just stipulate that we're going to have a dried detention pond. Excuse me, I'm just getting over a chest cold. So we added number nine, I'm sorry, number eight, which states, "Weary yard relationship with the minimum of 35-foot building setbacks to existing houses along the Shallowdale Road properties." What that means in short is the concept plan that we're showing, we're going to effectively rotate buildings seven and eight, and we're going to face those to the south. So we have a relationship for the existing houses for a rear-to-rear. So the neighbors were concerned about traffic lights, or I'm sorry, vehicle lights shining into the backyards, so by rotating those things, we'll eliminate that situation. We also added some additional screening, and hopefully this will help with the naturalization of the detention pond. So we, we indicated that the... So we have a relationship for the existing houses for a rear-to-rear. So the neighbors were concerned about traffic lights, or I'm sorry, vehicle lights shining into the backyards, so by rotating those things, we'll eliminate that situation. We also added some additional screening, and hopefully this will help with the naturalization of the detention pond. So we, we indicated that the, to enhance the screening on the open space easement, three rows of trees will be provided on the east side of the pond, and two rows of screening will be provided on the north side of the pond. So hopefully those, well, clarify some of those issues that we've had previously. So Ben had went through a few of the comments that the planning commission and neighbors had before, and I'll just briefly kind of reiterate how we've addressed those. So the first issue was the reduction of EP. So what we've done on this plan is the area of .93 acres that was previously EP will be equal to our new open space easement. So 9.3, or, sorry, .93 acres of open space buffer shall be preserved. The use of EP for density, we think that the conditional rezoning allows density and provides the buffer that everyone's looking for. So the EP zoning was, and I'll get into this a little bit more, but the EP zoning having a curvilinear flow to it really restricted the ability for us to develop the property. So I think what we've done is been able to provide the buffer that was the original tent of the EP while also providing the landowner with a useful piece of property based on the open space easement tool. And then finally, it was the headlight issue, which I've already mentioned that we addressed by rotating the lots and providing a 35-foot buffer. So not to, to reengage with the 18 years of history, like Ben said, we'd like to move forward and look at the plan that you've got in front of you. And I think the key issues are reconfiguring, and I'll use Brent's quote, the wonky rezoning layout while providing a buffer to the homeowners. So a short paraphrase on the history. In 2006, the Troy zoning ordinance did not have a zoning mechanism to provide open space. So despite the fact that not all these properties were environmentally sensitive, EP, environmental protection zoning, was commonly used to provide a buffer. To my knowledge, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe the EP zoning has been used since 2006, and that was when the Michigan Enabling Act was, was approved. Since that time, we've utilized the open space preservation easement. That's the current tool that we typically see for all the new developments. This easement provides a more specific and permanent mechanism to preserve open space versus the EP zoning district. The, the sites in question, they were rezoned in 2002 for a specific site plan. It was, it was a assemblage of 18 acres. That plan never got built. The original, the, I'm sorry, the curvilinear zoning lines follow a path that's unique, can you put the zoning plan back up? So that, that zoning path follows, the zoning line follows a path that's unique to that site plan. It was the back of curb for the road as it came in and out of the site. So that plan can't be built today because Briggs Park was built. So if you were to, if you were to go along that original road alignment, continue to extend it south, it's not possible. So the EP area, or more better, the, the line of where the RT is set prohibits us from being able to develop a good portion of our property, which is the cusp of why we're asking to rezone. So in the, in the standards, there's five, there's five standards in which rezoning is allowed. And let me briefly go through those. The proposed rezoning, number one, if the proposed rezoning is consistent with the master plan, if the current zoning is in material conflict with the master plan, which conflict is due to one or more of the following, and there's a list of three items there. So as Mr. Carlisle said earlier, this property for the last 20 years is consistent with the master plan and a medium-density residential development. Number two, the proposed rezoning will not affect or increase any nonconformity. Again, the intent of the R1T, single-family attached district, is to provide medium-density residential development, so we comply with number two. Additionally, the master plan states that low-impact uses like condominiums should be encouraged on the Rochester Road corridor, fronting between neighborhood nodes. Additionally, RT zoning meets the definition of the missing middle, which is single-family homes, duplexes, fourplexes, lofts, townhouses, mid-scale apartments, and live-work units. Missing middle houses, housing achieves moderate density and can be appealing to both younger buyers and older populations. As part of the conditions, the proposed development will meet all or exceed the RT zoning requirements. So this gets back to the discussion with respect to landscape screening. We've provided in our conditions addition, additional and above setbacks and landscaping that would already be required to meet under the RT zoning. So during the site plan process, the rest of the screening and buffers we provided, but we wound up highlight specific areas to help enhance the buffers. Number three, public services and facilities affected by a proposed development will be capable of accommodating service and facility loads used, caused by use of the development. In this case, we are compatible with, or the proposed development would be compatible with, the environment, the density, traffic volumes, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. All the public utilities are available and sized to accommodate development. Rochester Road is capable, is capable of safely and efficiently accommodating the expected traffic for a multifamily development. Number four, the rezoning will not impact public health, safety, or welfare. Again, the capacity of the public utilities and the services are sufficient to accommodate this, so I feel we meet this item as well. Lastly, number five, the rezoning will ensure compatibility with adjacent land uses. Our property itself is 50% RT currently. Rezoning the property will remove the multiple zoning on the properties, which is inconsistent with current planning practices. The RT one fam, the RT one-family attached residential district is consistent with the future land use plan. The city has consistently rezoned properties along the Rochester Road corridor as recommended within the past, the master plan. The adjacent properties are with the same future land use designation where developed as multifamily developments. The proposed number of dwelling units is consistent with the characteristic of the surroundings and the buildings. And lastly, the rezoning will create a uniform district that will not be provided, that would not be provided prior to the Michigan Zo, Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. So that kind of summarizes all five of the standards, I think, that we meet or exceed all those requirements. To address stormwater detention, we, we looked at some innovative, and again, this is a concept plan at a rezone, but we went ahead and we looked at combining the ponds with Briggs Park to create one pond. However, that pond is too high to outlet to our site, so we couldn't do a connection. We positioned the pond at the low part of the property. Moving it to any other location other than that would be trying to make water flow uphill. One of the critical issues with the neighbors was the geese. There are a lot of geese in Briggs Park. So they specifically asked us to not have another standing body of water to help increase the population of the geese, geese, or, or homes for the geese. In addition, they talked about standing water and insects. So we specifically created a dry pond. It's hard to naturalize a dry pond, but there's also, city engineering department, in order to take over maintenance of a pond, requires the pond to be dry. So there's, for both those reasons, not only the neighbors, as well as the engineering department, we went with a dry pond, and the, the goal will be to enhance landscaping around that area to create a nice buffer to the neighbors. So, and lastly, I know we, we strive to have naturalized ponds, but based on the number of projects that I've done, projects I've seen, there are a lot of ponds that are rectangular and oval in shape. So the goal is always to try to get to that, just isn't feasible in all situations, and mostly because of the engineering department for maintenance purposes. So I'll close with, the rezoning to RT is consistent with the master plan. The rezoning meets all the required standard conditions. The EP area and the open space area is been preserved at .93 acres. What we did was reconfigure it to get rid of the wonky zoning and better develop the property. The proposed conditions meet or exceed all RT requirements and provide buffering requested by our neighbors. The home-to-home separation of the south end of the property, which is currently the EP area, will have a minimum of 185 feet of separation between house-to-house with 125-foot buffer. This separation is the same separation if we were to build this under the RT. So the buy right development versus the proposed is a huge space difference of almost 200-feet separation. The open space agreement, which as Ben indicated hasn't been defined yet, but we'll define that during the site plan stage with Julie, will restrict what can be done with these, with this property or the open space buffer and create, create in perpetuity the protection and screening that the neighbors have asked for. The issues identified by the neighbors and the engineering department have been met for providing a dry pond, and the enhanced landscaping will provide a buffer within the, with a, a buffer within the open space area that should be appealing to everyone. With that, open any questions?
Any questions from the commission to the applicant? Mr. Lambert?
Thank you. Essentially, by asking for eliminating the EP zone and putting in an open space preservation easement, you're gonna get a bonus of 12 additional units for the overall property, from what I understand from staff is concerned, is what they indicated, or up to 12 additional units.
Did you check that math? Sorry. So I think, I thought it was 22 for the RT and four for the R1C, so it was 27 to 32, so it's addition of five, but I could be wrong on my math.
We'll, we'll recalculate the math here real quickly.
Okay. While, while we're calculating that, one of the things I'm sure we're gonna hear from your neighbors that are next to you, they're gonna say, well, the developer's getting these additional units, what's in it for us? And what's the benefit to your neighbors as far as eliminating the EP and going to open space preservation easement?
Well, I think the EP from a zoning perspective has less controls than the open space easement. The EP zoning isn't used anymore because it's not the tool that we would prefer. So if we would consent, we would continue to see an EP zoning requested, had that been a tool that was appropriate. All the new developments have open space easements. I think that we've, we've had several meetings with the homeowners around the site, and I think that we've met with, and we will continue to as the site plan progresses, met their requests in terms of screening and buffering from the new development.
Okay, thank you.
I did the math. So the EP right now is approximately 40,000 square feet. The RT zoning requires 5,000 square feet per unit, so you take 40,000 divided by 5,000, that's eight units. So they're actually, I, I think I said three. It's actually a density increase of eight units by rezoning that portion of the EP to RT to include the rest of, rest of the property. So apologize for misspeaking earlier.
Okay.
Does that consist with your math, too?
I had in my head that we had 27 by right and 32 was the bonus. The EP, the EP would yield five more. I thought we had 27 by right and the EP would yield five more.
I think our maths are, maths are different here, John. So, but I, I don't. Yeah, I, I had 20. So 20 by right, none in the EP currently, and then 32 total, but that increase of eight is due to the, partially due, the increase to 12 is partially due to the EP being rezoned to RT, so.
If, if you took the EP and made it a rectangle like you've got in the concept, getting rid of that curve, where would you put your detention pond?
In the EP zoning.
Could you do it in the EP zoning, a retention pond?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at maybe, if we kept it EP, you'd lose about eight units then, probably. That was next to the EP.
You'd probably lose more because of the curvilinear fashion. If it was rectangular?
I'm saying if it was rectangular, it'd use about those eight units next to the EP zoning.
Yeah, basically.
Okay. Anyone else? My question, so you're trading that .93 acres of EP for .93 acres of RT that has been designated as a buffer?
Well, we're trading it for open space easement.
For open space?
Yes.
Okay. That said, the landscaping in that, you said you're gonna provide enhanced landscaping. Could you kind of give us an idea what enhanced means in your view?
Well, we specifically are adding into our conditions that will provide at least three rows of trees along the, the east property line and two rows of trees along the north property line. We'll have tree replacements and screening that'll happen during the site plan stage. So there'll be additional trees that are gonna go in that area, but to the exact layout and design, I don't know at this point.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
So if you look on the screen, the original concept plan shows two rows of trees along eastern property line, so this would be enhanced to three rows of trees, as I, as I understand, Mr. Thompson, and then along here would be two rows of trees. Is that correct, Mr. Thompson?
Directly north of the pond, yes.
Directly north.
And what do you propose on the north side between the existing R1C and your north property line? What would, what kind of landscaping goes there?
Will meet the RT screening requirements.
Okay. Now, you know, the, if, if that northern parcel remains, well, let's say it, it is right now, it's R1C, it has a setback of 40 feet as an R1C, you're offering 35 feet, correct?
I think R1C is 35-foot rear.
Or a rear setback. Thought it said 40 in the, or you misread it.
Forty.
The rear setback for R1C is 40 feet.
So we'll be meeting the, the rear setback for RT at 35.
Okay. All right. Any other questions at this point from the commission? Oh, Ms. Paracus.
Yeah, have you ever considered doing an underground detention on the eastern side of the property and not touching that EP protection at all?
We looked at the possibility for underground detention. The problem is that we'd have to back that up into the pavement and getting an outlet. The problem is that we'd have to back that up into the pavement, and getting an outlet would be difficult. So, we've got a real shallow outlet, we're trying to get that pond as close to the outlet as possible to meet the detention requirements.
Any other questions at this point? Well, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to go.
Thank you.
Move on to that item, but before I do, I just wanted to let the audience know that a public hearing is an opportunity for residents to share their comments on a specific project with the planning commission. Everyone in attendance who wishes to speak will be provided that opportunity. We appreciate everyone who came out tonight to share their thoughts with the planning commission. Your comments are important. Before I open the public hearing, it is important to set some ground rules so that we can be an effective and efficient public hearing. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name, address, and where your home is located relative to the party that we're discussing tonight. Please address all comments to the planning commission. Please be respectful of the planning commission, staff, planning consultant, applicants, and those in the audience. This is an opportunity for residents to provide comment. It is not a discussion or debate. Additionally, this is a formal public hearing and a public meeting that should be handled with decorum and professionalism. So, we ask that those in attendance refrain from talking, applauding, or other expressions of emotion during the meeting. Finally, all comments in the public hearing this evening should relate to the item under consideration, and each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Is there anyone out there that would like to speak on the public comments? Come right up. And if there's going to be a few, you can kind of line up so that we move this along.
Good evening, my name is Narish Gupta. I'm a resident of Briggs Park, a section just south of the property we are talking of. Address is 4337 Bennett Park Circle, Troy, 48085. I have two comments and a suggestion. One is, we should look at this conversion as a overall, properties right from north of 75 till end of Troy, that's South Belvoir, to see how many future such conversions may take place, and whether they are in line with our, you know, master plan, how much impact they will have on the density, and then this could be a part of that decision. Second is, the traffic on Rochester is very, very high. Currently, it's quite unsafe to move, to make a left turn from Briggs Park onto the Rochester, and, and traffic is going up. So, well, this may be very, you know, incremental, this may add to a little bit of traffic, but we should look at the traffic. I don't know how this gets coordinated with the traffic plans, not only in Troy, but communities north of Troy, like Rochester, Rochester Hills. So how do we look at, it's a related issue, how do we look at managing traffic? A third is a very small, related suggestion, can we relocate this podium to that location? So when somebody's talking, he's looking at the entire public, and instead of with the back towards the public. I know it's addressing the, the little bit here, but I would really suggest that, consider putting this there, so the whole thing's, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, did you, yeah, did you sign in? And while he's signing in, I just wanted to point, you can stay, you can sit there, stand there and put your, we have a light indicator up here to assist you in knowing how your three minutes are going. Green is two minutes, yellow goes on at one minute left, and red, you're done.
And a beep.
And a beep noise. Anyone else would like to come up? He'll, he'll finish, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Jim McCauley, I am a resident on 4435 Harold Drive. I represent Shalebrook subdivision and homeowners regarding this development. You got part of my lengthy rebuttal to their application, which spent some time. We have met with the builders since that time, and we, we, we know that things are going to get built, we understand that. We are supporting this at this point in time, but I want to make a clarification on this, so that way we're all understanding this as far as what this is. The item number eight that they put on their voluntary conditions, rear yard relationship with a minimum of 35-foot building setbacks to existing houses on Shallowdale. Basically, what that is, is we want rear-to-rear orientation of the building to the homes with a 35-foot setback, which is consistent with the RT zoning setbacks. The whole idea, and we'll go back to why this was initially zoned the way it was, is to have a buffer between RT to our subdivision. And if you look at that area, which was the EP area, its intent was very clear, that we wanted, we wanted a similar setback from any development, those houses along Harold there, to the rest of Harold and to the north. So, that EP zone was an important part of it. With the screening, with the setbacks, with them reorientating the building to the north, I think they've eliminated a lot of our concerns, and so from that standpoint, we feel that they're going to do a good job with that. But I wanted to clarify, number eight, what, what the intent is there. And, and if there's any question about it, that it should be taken care of tonight, so that way it's on public record, so in the future, this isn't a wonky line that people look at 15 years later, which was actually negotiated and put in place to serve as a buffer.
Thank you.
Mr. Krent, could I ask Mr. McCauley a question while the time's still up?
Sure, yes.
Mr. McCauley, do you support a dry detention basin?
A dry, yes, we, yes, the dry detention basin, we do. We understand that. And we did not want a wet pond there. If you've been to the area, you'd see the fencing that the rest of us that are backing up to Briggs Park, basically, we got chicken wire fences to keep the geese out of our, our yards, because, have you ever been around a building where all the geese are? Is that where you want to live? No, neither do we. So from that standpoint, we wanted to eliminate that. I've even had a conversation with builder regarding the fact that when they put in that dry detention pond, they're going to have that potential problem of the geese wanting to feed over there. They're going to find that nice green grass, and they're going to want to go over there and eat. So he might want to really seriously look at what he's doing as a buffer or barrier to keep them out of their area in the future, so that way it keeps them geese-free, and that would also eliminate them coming into our area also. So, I mean, we had two major concerns, headlights and geese. And after that, that was the things that we were able to do. Now, we'll say one last thing, a lot of time.
Well, you can go ahead.
Okay, one last thing, we talked about, and I really still want this explored, because it was such a rush job, we talked as late as 2:30 today, they met back with their, with their, with our architect builders, and then got back to me at 4:30 and talked to me then. One of the things I'd really like to explore, and I want this to look at still, because I think this can be done, but I don't want to do it in a sense that this becomes now a wet pond. We also asked that buildings three and four, if you look at them up there by the detention pond, we wanted one of those buildings turned, so that way it had a rear yard setback to the dry detention pond. According to their engineering, they couldn't do it, okay? We said, my question was, why can't that be diverted, all the utilities to around that building, to the detention pond, so that way we have no headlights coming in anywhere? They said it wasn't feasible, but I would still like that explored, and if that could happen, then you're talking about there's no headlights coming in anybody's backyards, because if you look at it that way, you have potentially five buildings, four double car garages, all of a sudden now you're talking 40 vehicles a night pulling down that, shining lights into potential residence home. Nobody wants that. So, if that can still happen, I still like that explored, but because of the timeframe and not wanting to postpone again, or table this, that we're looking at moving forward, we want that still explored. So, we don't want to come back and say, "No, we can't do that, because there is a pump issue and stuff." I want them to explore that more. And if we could do that, that would be fantastic. So that way, before it comes to city council, who ultimately decides what we're doing here tonight, I think that would be the best thing for it. So we've had some good discussions, and we've, we've tried to put this in the best light, knowing that there is going to be construction there, but we want it to be in effect that it's advantageous for them and also not affecting us. As, from 2002 until now, why the zoning was, and has never changed. And so, that's been that way for 17 years by design, and we don't want that to change still.
Okay. Mr. Krent?
Yes.
I have a question if I.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Mr. McCauley, could you restate your opening comment about the homes that are on, along the north property line and their orientation? You talked about a rear yard setback.
Right, if you look at that, if you look at item number eight on their, on their condition, voluntary conditions, rear yard relationship, that means that the, the relationship between the building of one of the condominium units and the existing homes to Shalebrook will have a rear yard relationship. So that means that is telling us that they're going to be back-to-back, okay? And what we did is we set that distance, if you continue reading it, with a minimum of 30, with a minimum of 35-feet building setbacks. So they'll turn that building, so it'll be back-to-back orientation, add a minimum of 35 feet away, which would give you, in a sense, even though it's a side yard, which only requires 10 feet, it's giving it the, the view and the existence of really what a rear yard setback would look like. So by setting it 35 feet, and the orientation being back-to-back, then, then it gives us that, that same, that same thing, on a side yard setback.
I want to make sure I'm understanding your words, because when you say the rear, I think, I look at these units, like unit seven and eight, and if they're rotated 90 degrees.
Yep.
That's the ones we're talking about.
Right.
What you want is really the front of the units facing the, facing north. You don't want the, you want the parking, that you want them going in the garage from the north side?
The parking is in the front. So.
Well, the parking is where the pavement.
Yeah, yeah, yes, okay. As I look at it, the parking, yes, the front of the, front of them would be facing, actually, the north.
Okay, so.
And the parking would be facing parking lot.
Right now, building eight, you enter from the west side, I call that the front side of the building. And that would be rotated, so the front side would be facing north.
Correct. And then it'd be entering the parking structure from the south side.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I apologize, I didn't understand completely what you're saying, but yes, you're, I'm looking at strictly from the garage and entry point for the, because most of them, if you look at.
Right, you want an internal, I mean, there's an internal vehicular circulation to this layout, and the pedestrian is on the outer core.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That would not change.
Okay, thank you. Please sign in. Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight on this item?
Before this next gentleman speaks, can I just say something for the record, Mr. Krent? We're very strict with our three-minute time limits, however, Mr. McCauley has indicated that he does represent the homeowners association, he was a critical part of the back-and-forth that he had with the applicant, so for those, for those reasons, he was afforded extra time.
I agree.
And I thank you, I thank you for that.
Sure. Go ahead, please.
My name is John Hughes, I live at 4495 Harold. Mine's the property with the giant paved area adjacent. When we moved here in 1990, one of the things that really attracted us was the very natural view that we had out of our backyard. And while a grass area with trees and landscaping is nice, it's not natural. It's somewhat artificial, in our opinion. And so we're disappointed that, we knew that there was going to be development, but it was all single-family residential that was going to be there, and that has slowly eroded over the 30 years we've been here. So we're disappointed by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Let me bring it back to this commission for comments.
Could I say one thing about the RT zoning?
Absolutely.
So, because of the proximity of this property to R1C, the maximum height of these units is going to be two and a half stories and 30 feet, which is consistent with the same height for the R1C zoning district. So these aren't, these aren't going to be any taller than what's permitted in a single family. I think that's, that's important, because if, if, if the planning commission does proceed with a recommendation of approval, if, I'm not, if, you know, over time, those trees are going to grow to a height that you're, it's going to provide pretty significant screening for those buildings, just for what it's worth.
Anyone else with comments? Just sort of in aside, I was thinking about the geese migrating over to fresh green grass. City has, I think, solved partially that problem with all their streams and rivers. They let a wild area of about three or four feet grow and not be mowed, and if you, even out here, there's this little dense parcel of weeds, vegetation, seems to work with the geese. And, you know, we, we all like pretty landscaping in this EP area, but maybe making it dense will take care of the geese problem. Anyone else, Mr. Lambert?
Can I ask the petitioner to come back up to answer a question?
Of course.
Thank you. Mr. McCauley referenced one request about the buildings on the east side, that he requested, if there was possible, to kind of switch their orientation for the headlight issue, and I guess you told him that that was not going to be feasible. Is there any other solutions you could come up with, as far as maybe some additional trees or some landscape screening that would help cut down that headlight issue?
Are you referencing buildings seven and eight?
No, it's three and four, I believe.
Oh, I'm, never say never. Okay, but we looked at it from a preliminary engineering perspective, we looked at it from a site access for the pond perspective, we looked at the existing easements that are already impacting the property, and I don't see a feasible way to rotate that.
How about some kind of landscape screening to cut down on the headlights that might be coming into the neighbors?
Well, I think that you've got, I mean, we've got three rows, we can certainly add some shrubs or whatever, although I have to leave the space open for DPW to get access to the pond.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for it.
As long as you're up to the podium, you say DPW or engineering is really the ones that's mandating a dry pond and a rectangular-shaped pond. Can you talk a little bit about this? Why, first of all, why, I understand the dry pond, but why the rectangular shape? And what, how does that, is it a maintenance issue, or what, what's driving that?
No, engineering has no, engineering doesn't require anything with regards to the shape.
Okay.
So, just for clarification, they do require the pond to be dry, in fact, we have to design it with under drains and French drains, and, and they won't even take over maintenance, the final maintenance responsibility, until the pond is dry and established with grass. So, so, shape, nothing.
How deep is this pond, or do you think this pond is going to be?
I think it's roughly, I'll just count the contours, about five feet deep.
Okay. What do they do for maintaining the pond? What are their responsibilities?
I'd have to defer to Kurt on that.
Okay. And is there, I mean, when we talk about shape, can there be a little bit more of creative shape with this, maybe elongating it or doing something a little bit differently other than the shape that you've got shown in this concept plan?
We can't go any further north with the pond, and from a grading perspective, I can't go any further south.
Can you explain why?
The, because we have to tie into the existing property line next, adjacent to us, so we have to, we have a maximum on a slope that we're allowed to grade for a grass area. So, so that's one on four down to the pond, and then one on six within the pond.
Okay, the low point of the pond is south or southeast?
The outlet is at the southeast corner.
Okay, and you're saying you can't stretch the pond out because you don't have enough fall, is that it?
Correct.
And even with the under drains, that doesn't make a difference?
No, and I have to slope the bottom up 1%.
Yeah, I guess if I have an issue, it's just this seems so mundane, and so.
You're right, utilitarian is the correct answer. But remember, it's not wet. It's, it's going to be depression, and, and trying to create curvilinear fashion with just land isn't going to give you the effect of the wet pond, what a wet pond would.
Well, no, I mean, the utilitarian component comes in is probably going to be just seed or seed, not much vegetation in there, you know, and that's unfortunate. It's not going to look inviting, it's not going to look like an amenity on the site.
Yeah, and unfortunately, that's, that's the, it's the rub, for lack of a better word, between planning and engineering.
Yeah, I have a problem with that. Mr. Savinon?
I just want to defend engineering and DPW just for, for a second. Given the choice between a utilitarian pond and a pond that is, you know, full-blown amenity that has, that's a rain garden with, with native plant species, et cetera.
that has, that's a rain garden with, with native plant species, et cetera, if you ask the preference of the DPW or engineering department, they're going to choose utilitarian every time because, to answer your question, they would regularly mow the, mow the turf grass, they would repair any structures or any infrastructure in the pond as needed, they would go in and clean out any sedimentation on a regular basis. It's minimalist in terms of, of maintenance because we've got hundreds of these all over the city. And just remember that we, you know, we had a significant cut in our workforce in, in 2010, and we've kind of been trying to play catch-up ever since. So we, we would, given the choice, we prefer utilitarian. Now, having said that, engineering will approve biolast wells and rain gardens, but it comes with a, a price in terms of, they've got to be designed right, constructed right, and then maintained in perpetuity correctly. And that, and that comes, there's a lot more training, there's a lot more maintenance that's involved. So there are engineering standards that would allow for, for more creative design, but again, it gets, it gets back to, to maintenance and just the, the hundreds of basins that DPW is responsible for maintenance. Because what, what will happen, when, when it meets the standards of the one-on-six slope and the other standards that we have, these are deeded over to the city with some fees for, to assist in the payment of maintenance, and then the city maintains them so that it's ensured that they're maintained to a certain standard. So Mr. Thompson is correct when he says it's, engineering and DPW prefer that type of pond, but it, it doesn't say, it doesn't mean that they exclusively only allow those types of ponds. Does that make sense?
Sure. But just to follow up, Mr. Hudson said, well, would the DPW, just, you know, to, matter of fact, save time and effort mowing this thing, leave some tall areas, maybe at the bottom, you know, to prevent geese from, you know, finding a home there?
I, I think they'd be open to that. I mean, I, I've known Mr. McCauley for, for a long time, and he's been a representative of the HOA for almost, for 17 years, and geese has been an issue for 17 years. I will vouch for that. That's been a concern. He's, Mr. McCauley, you're consistent.
So, Mr. Thompson, is there some kind of idea that you can come up with for that detention that would allow for taller grass?
I'll certainly work with the engineering department for anything they'd approve. I don't have any issue with it. It's a matter of their maintenance. So the, I think probably that heather or rough grass is typically more used when you have a permanent water source rather than a dry pond. But, so in this situation, I don't know it's, if it makes sense because it will be a dry pond, but if that's something that, that Kurt would approve, then we're all about it.
Any further comment?
Just a little big question.
Yes.
How deep is that in the detention, that pond would be, how deep the bottom, bottom most surface?
The, the depth of the pond should approximately five feet.
And then the bottom will be flat, right?
No, it'll be sloped at 1%, so it drains from the high side to the low side to the outlet. And that's in order to keep it dry.
But it's not going to be noticeable probably from, just by looking.
No, it'll, I mean, it, it just allows that positive drainage.
I get it. So how big that flat surface would be, you know, like, is it something that kids can play or?
Sure.
Do you know the dimension approximately?
140 by 225, something like that. I'm just guessing off the dimensions off the plan. So there's a specific calculation for the required amount of volume. We went through roughly and calculated that for this plan, but that'll have to be refined.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. Thompson, do you know, do your clients have an attorney that they're working with on this conditional rezoning agreement?
Oh, we haven't started that yet. I'm sure they will, but I don't know who it is.
Okay. So, so I'm sitting here looking at these voluntary conditions. This conditional rezoning agreement is going to look considerably different than other conditional rezoning agreements that city council has considered before because there is no site plan that's attached to it, which is fine. But I'm just wondering, so when I look at condition number eight, I'll be honest, as a lawyer, I don't know what that means. Are you going to be able to sit down with the attorney if the attorney has questions so we can craft language that's going to make sense that accomplishes what Mr. McCauley has stood up here and said is what, he has his understanding of what number eight means? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Certainly. And the answer is yes, will definitely help with crafting that language as necessary.
Have you?
Mr. McCauley and I are, I think, I think I tried to explain the same thing. I think he did it better than me, but we're on the same page. The, the goal is that unit seven and eight would be rotated 90 degrees.
And I guess that, that, whatever you guys are on the same page with needs to be put in language that a layperson reading the conditional rezoning agreement is going to understand.
We'll work with you on that.
And then, along the same lines, so the voluntary condition number one, development shall meet all requirements for the RT zoning district. Well, that's not really a condition that needs to meet the RT zoning district anyways. I'm just wondering, are there any other conditions that you've spoken with your client about that, of, on the concept plan, that are not incorporated here, but they may consider? For example, what I'm looking at, you know, are they willing to talk about nine units, a maximum of nine units? Because it's possible that the plan that comes back as a, as a site plan is going to look considerably different than, than the concept plan. So are they willing to consider, and I don't need an answer right now, but are they willing to consider something in the conditional rezoning agreement, like no more than nine units? No more, you know, nine buildings with a maximum of three or four units per building?
That's not in there?
Not in the voluntary conditions that I'm looking at that would be incorporated into the conditional rezoning?
Yeah, we can certainly stipulate that.
I'm not, okay, I just, it's just, these are, you know.
Yeah, I think what, I think what our goal was with respect to the RT zoning was to say that we're not asking for any variances, that we're, the, the goal here is that we're going to meet all the requirements and/or exceed those requirements under RT. So, so I guess we could restate that as no variances are requested.
Well, the conditional rezoning agreement obviously needs to flow from your clients to our office. So I guess these are just points that I'm sitting here, because it's going, usually we tie these to a site plan, right? So we can say, okay, if it's not articulated in language, at least we can point to the site plan. So this is, this conditional rezoning agreement is going to look different, and I just want to make sure all of the points that are raised here in Mr. McCauley's concerns and the homeowners' concerns, and then your concerns, and then make sure that we're all on the same page. I think there needs to be communication between you and the attorney so that agreement looks the way everybody expects it to look because, again, this is going to be different than council has considered on previous occasions.
Got you.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Anyone else? I've got a comment, again, going back to that number eight on your voluntary conditions. It says rear yard relationship with a minimum of 35, of 35-foot building setbacks to existing houses on Shallowdale. So it's, again, the language, it's really your front setback you're talking right now. It's your front, they're rear, right?
Yeah, and technically, it's a side yard setback to the property. So it is, it is a bit confusing, and I agree, we could probably wordsmith that a little better.
And, yeah, because, because words matter, you know, and when we're, when laypeople like me are trying to interpret what you all do every day in terms of ordinance interpretation, when that gets in the conditional rezoning agreement, words are going to matter. And rear is different than side, which is different than front. So we got to make sure we kneel down that language so that at the end of the day, we don't have it configured wrong, and Mr. McCauley comes back and says, how come you got that conditional rezoning agreement wrong?
Right. And remember, we will have a site plan approval and, you know, so we've got another step to go here, so.
For sure.
That'll feather itself out as we go through the site plan, and you can actually get a visual of the proposed development.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlyle?
Yeah, just not to throw another person in the party here, but Director Savadon, I also have some concerns with some of the language. For example, we, it speaks to setbacks to the existing houses on Shallowdale. She said the existing rear property lines of the houses on, so I think we would like to be part of that conversation as well in terms of, of making sure. So I suggest that we all have a meeting together, including Mr. McCauley as well, to kind of hammer out some of these, some of these conditions, just before they go to council with, with councils, with our council's approval as part of it.
Right. And I am sorry, I hate talking this much, but, what was I going to say? So I don't know, in all of these projects, time is of the essence, right? And I don't want to be the holdup in the conditional rezoning, but this is going to take a little bit more crafting because we're not, you know, we're not saying, usually I say in these things, oh, you know, exhibit A, site plan, this is what you need to do. Well, this is going to be more, you know, wordsmithed, I guess, to use the word used. So I think it would be instructive to just have that initial meeting so that we don't get held up in that conditional rezoning.
Sure.
Process, or agreement process.
Mr. Savadon?
Yeah, I agree with everything that Mr. Dufresne just said. I think, I think fundamentally, everyone here understands the intent of this language. I think that, but we, we got to get it right. The, I had something really articulate and intelligent to say, and it's, it's escaped me. Yeah.
Look on the floor, sometimes they fall down.
I've lost my train of thought, I apologize. Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Did it have to do with something that was wonky?
It's my wonky brain, I think. So I just want to be clear for, for the audience members who, who, who aren't, you know, and most of us aren't really familiar with, with conditional rezonings. So the, the role of the planning commission this evening is to make a recommendation. Hopefully, you know, we, we don't postpone, we make a recommendation, and then this would be, would fall in the lap of the city council to actually take action. So there will be another opportunity for, for public comment if anyone wants to comment to city council when it's being considered. And then if, if it is conditionally rezoned, the, the applicant will have to come back before the planning commission with a, with a site plan. So there'll be another opportunity to look at the plans to ensure that, that what is proposed in the detailed site plan is consistent with, with the revised concept plan that the applicant's going to provide us for city council. So there's checks and balances, and there will be other opportunities for engagement with, with council or with the planning commission. Thank you.
Anyone else? You know, I'd like to see is a preliminary site, some kind of a plan like Mr. Dufresne was talking about, to go to council so they have that. Is it a typical way to handle a rezoning is to have that? Is there any indication that you, your client, will be able to provide that to city council?
I'd like to defer that to planning.
So, so not to speak for Mr. Thompson, but, but this is a different approach. Myself, Mr. Dufresne, and Mr. Carlyle have talked about some of the challenges of conditional rezonings when detailed site plans are submitted as part of that because it is the role of the planning commission to review the site plan and all the documents that come with the site plan, but when it's a conditional rezoning, and the site plan may have a comment that's really, the, the planning commission may have a comment related to the site plan, it gets very confusing or wonky, if you will, because the conditions by law have to be voluntarily offered by the applicant and not suggested by the planning commission. So when we have a detailed site plan, it becomes an awkward dance between a detail that really is the purview of the planning commission to discuss, but because it's not voluntarily offered, it gets very complicated. So this approach is actually something that we kind of look forward to dealing with because what is anticipated is going to be submitted is going to be something that looks like this, which is a concept sketch that has just enough detail to, to make, make intelligent decisions, and it will give the staff and, and the city attorney's office a concept to look at to ensure that what is proposed in the detailed site plan is consistent with that concept that will be before city council.
And not to belabor Mr. Savadon's point, I'm just going to say the same thing a different way, but what that means is we can't require, I think you're asking, we can't require the applicant to come forward with a site plan as a part of the conditions.
I understand.
So, so at the end of the day, while I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, I would like to see a site plan because that makes my job easier, easier, but at the end of the day, we can't require it.
Interesting. Yes?
Not to jump on, to, to your point, though, I think it would be helpful to update the concept plan that goes to the city council based on the discussions we had tonight in terms of rotating, et cetera, so they.
Agreed.
So that this is not what goes to the city council.
Agreed. Anyone else? So quick question to staff. If we did approve this tonight, and we had somebody that could really wordsmith the approval with all the conditions he offered, would staff be able to then create some language that would then go to council that would cover all the thoughts we had here tonight?
Well, that, may I, that's, that's the purpose of the conditional rezoning, which will be hammered out between, between, between the councils.
Okay.
So the, the, you need to, council needs to, you know, determine whether or not it meets the rezoning under the standards that are provided in the resolution, and then the conditional rezoning agreement itself will incorporate all of, all of these things that we've discussed.
I, I have a comfort level.
That's what I wanted to know.
I have a comfort level based on the comments of the discussion that's happened, the presentation by the applicant, the comments by the homeowners' association president, the comments by the residents, et cetera. I have a comfort level moving forward that prior to city council, we can take this, these conditions, and we can wordsmith them a little bit so that we fine-tune it in, in, to a better form that we can present to council along with the revised concept sketch that would accom, that would accompany the improved language.
Mr. Hudson?
Help me along that line of thinking. Let's assume at this conference where you're wordsmithing, what if something comes up that the petitioner offers intonation? What do you do with that? You incorporate it? You say we can't do it?
No, we incorporate it into the conditional rezoning agreement, and then the council, council considers that.
Okay, so you've got a mediation on the conditions. Mr. Savadon?
Yes, Mr. Savadon?
So, as the person that presents the city council, me, if there was other, additional conditions, what I would do as part of my presentation and in the, the cover memo to city council is I would explain that there are additional, there's additional provisions that were voluntarily offered by the applicant after the planning commission read, made the recommendation, so that it's clear that these are in addition to what the planning commission saw.
Well, we'll stop right there for a minute. Let's assume that some wonky, that's a great term tonight, condition comes into play at this meeting, and planning commission's never discussed it, even thought about it, and you're saying it goes to city council. What happened to our role then as to a recommending body?
Well, I would say that if, if, if city council felt that it was a significant modification or significant change, it would be in their purview to send it back to, to planning commission for consideration, and they probably would do that. My, my guess is that this is pretty close to what, but you never, never say never, right? So if, if something did come up that was significant, I would imagine that it would be potentially referred back to planning commission for consideration.
Okay.
Mr. Lambert? Just a procedural question. I agree with Mr. Tagle that I'm not overly enthused about the, the design or the natural appearance of the dry pond, mostly based on Mr. Carlyle's comments, but because it's a conditional rezoning, we shouldn't probably attach it to the proposed resolution because technically it's not coming from the applicant, it's coming from us. Is that correct?
No, they, they, number three, and their voluntary conditions passed out by Mr. Thompson do say that the detention basin shall be designed as a dry pond.
I mean, I'm sorry, a more, a more natural-looking dry pond than what's on the diagram, so.
Yeah, that would need to flow from.
Okay, all right.
From the petition.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything else? If not, does someone want to brave the reading of the resolution to put all that in one? You want to do it?
Sure.
Great.
Just no one second it until they make sure they're all comfortable with the word. A resolve that the planning commission hereby recommends to the city council that the R-1C, RT, and EP to RT conditional rezoning request, as per section 16.04 of the City of Troy zoning ordinance located on the east side of Rochester Road, south of Shallowdale, within section 14, being approximately 1.877 acres in size, be granted for the following reasons. Number one, the request complies with the master plan. Number two, the RT district would permit greater flexibility in use and development of the property. Number three, the conditions offered by the applicant this evening reasonably protect the adjacent properties. Four, the rezoning would be compatible with the surrounding zoning and land use. Five, the site can be adequately served with municipal water and sewer. And six, the development of the property should not unreasonably impact adjacent properties.
Do I have a second for that? Mr. Sadek, I mean, Sadek? Mr. Raymond, Ramon, do you want to second it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, then the vote?
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Quin?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Parakis?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Vote passes?
Thank you.
You're off on the next mission. Okay, we've got a Planning Commission 2019 annual report to talk about.
The Michigan Planning Enabling Act requires that there be a report prepared annually to identify all the projects that were worked on by the Planning Commission in the previous calendar year, and we've been doing this for about a decade. And I'm just going to pull it up here. You can see from the report that we've been very, very busy this calendar year, that I think this is the longest report we've put together since I started doing these. We've been really busy.
We've felt it.
Yeah, and things, I don't see things tailing off anytime soon either. I mean, we're, we're keeping busy.
Excellent.
Does anyone have any questions about the report?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Lambert.
What about, I think Ms. Lamasser suggested adding additional information on this report as far as number of units. Is that something that would be appropriate to include?
I need to think about the best way of doing that because if you look at the column on the right, this is really a Planning Commission report, so it's, it doesn't dive deep into actions taken by City Council, it doesn't get into building plans approved or construction that's completed. So I would need to think of a way to address that because it's not a, it's not a status report that takes us all the way to final completion. There's, I'd have to think of a way to do that. Maybe it could be, you know, units approved by the Planning Commission, it could be on that level or, you know, that type of thing. So I would have to kind of look at it. At first, I really, at first it was mentioned by Ms. Lamasser was earlier this evening, and I just kind of got to process that, so...
Because aren't there other homes being built without going, coming through?
There are, yeah. Yeah, there are. There are homes that are just, involve lot splits or they involve filling in lots that were approved years ago, you know, they're vacant.
Tear downs.
Tear downs and rebuilds and assemblies, you know, so this is a Planning Commission annual report as required by law.
Any other comments?
Just a relevant question. So do you have any estimation of how many new single-family residents were approved, including the multifamily attached or single-family?
I'd have to dig deeper.
It'll be good to have it in the summary page if we're going to do it in the tabular form.
Yeah.
We know that how many new families you are adding to the city, you know, because these houses, these houses will be filled eventually. That's an information I think it would be nice to have on the summary page. Thank you.
Anything else on the report? Okay, moving on to the next item, public comment for items that are on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is on tonight's current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, Planning Commission comment. I guess I'll start with Ms. Parakis. Anything that you want to talk about tonight?
Well, I do want to say that I was pleasantly surprised tonight with the outcome. It was really refreshing to see that a developer and a neighborhood president was, worked together and came to a compromise. I wasn't expecting that, and it made our job a lot easier, I felt, because I felt good about a vote that it seemed to make most people, everyone happy, really. So I thought that was pretty neat.
Mr. Ramon?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Apidian?
I have a question for Mr. Savadon. I drove by a project this past week that we approved, I'd say about 16 months ago, 18 months ago, and one thing that was proposed and that we approved or we recommended to the City Council, City Council approved, was, it's kind of what we were talking about tonight, was this whole concept of bio swales and things like that. And that's what we actually, that's what was presented to us, and that's what we reviewed, that's what we recommended, that's what City Council approved. Driving by the project, I noticed there was no bio swales. Everything was rear yard, they were just putting in all the underground, and it was all rear yard drains to where they were actually proposing these bio swales when they came before us and before council. So I was always under the impression that that's binding for a developer and that that's something that doesn't change in final engineering. Is that, is that something that can change? Can a developer come before us and present this elaborate design of bio swales and creative stormwater detention, and then somewhere down the road, that just all goes away?
Well, generally speaking, it's binding, but I'd have to know which project, and I'd have to know more details.
Sure, I can, I can give that to you offline, but...
Mr. Hudson? Nothing.
No comment?
I was just going to congratulate Mr. Ramon, he was officially approved last night as our ZBA rep, and Mrs. Cruz is very happy about that.
Thank you.
Any advice for him later, if you're curious?
Yeah, I'll talk to her.
Have a minor conference after, okay? Mr. Tagle? Nothing for me, thank you. Mr. Dufresne?
All right, I've already spoken a lot tonight, but I have more bad news to deliver. The Toll Brook lawsuit 2.0, as I'm referring to, it has been filed and now served. So it's complicated because procedurally speaking, it is two, it is four cases. It is a complaint on both Toll Brook and Toll Brook West, so the Alpine Project and the McClure Project, and it is a claim of appeal and ZBA. They use various, the ZBA deny. So there are four total cases in two different judges' courtrooms.
Thanks for that info. Chair, who are the judges?
Mattis and Daniel P. O'Brien in Circuit Court. Lori and I are weighing our options with respect to removal.
Mr. Savadon?
Nothing.
Then?
I just wanted to compliment Mr. Quin on a nice job of chairing your first meeting, so...
Thanks. Yes, go ahead.
Reminder, and we'll get, we'll get the written material emailed to you tomorrow, a reminder of the joint meeting on February 4th, next Tuesday, at room 303 in the community center.
Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
The public's invited to be there, but there's no...
No, it's a public meeting, and they'll be...
Public comment?
There'll be an opportunity for public comment. We're, we, yes, there'll be an opportunity for public comment.
Which room is it, Brent?
303.
I ask you, if we're going to have public comment, we've got council and the commission there, who is going to respond? Each individual member, the chairman, who?
Well, it's an opportunity like we have here for the public to comment, it's not necessarily engaging them in a dialogue.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate that, how do I say this? This is, the goal is for this to be an effective meeting with engagement, with true engagement and true feedback. We've got some questions that we would like to ask council and Planning Commission. We don't want this to be, for lack of a better term, dog and pony show where we show up and 60 minutes later where everyone's had their five-minute pontification, and then we, you know, we go around the horn once, and then we adjourn, and we have accomplished nothing. We want to have a meaningful meeting is the goal. I'm looking forward to this meeting.
I have lots of questions now about what you just said.
Mr. Chairman, can you adjourn the meeting, please?
Did you, did you open up a can or something?
Maybe. Okay, so this meeting next Tuesday, I sort of had it in my head because I haven't seen an agenda, and I haven't heard much discussion about it. I sort of had it in my head that it would be similar, right, to other joint meetings that we've had in the past, where Planning Commission and City Council come together and we discuss some common concerns that affect the city of Troy. And that, you know, the members of commission and council have an opportunity to speak freely with one another, and because it's a public meeting, we have had, I'm just going to call it an audience in the past. Now, when you tell me that we're going to allow public comment, it sounds more like this is like a public hearing, or I guess this has completely thrown me, and if the meeting starts at seven o'clock and I'd like to get home and in bed by, I don't know, midnight, how are we going to have a meeting and have public comment and keep it in a reasonable timeframe?
So I guess what I was referring to when I said a meaningful meeting is in the past, under past leadership, we had a number of joint meetings where they started at a certain time and they had to be finished by a certain time. We had to, you know, we had to, and we did have public comment at the end for all those meetings. We've never not had public comment. So it was, it was, just seemed kind of forced because we had a time limit. That's not to say we're going to go to midnight. The goal is not to have a lengthy meeting, the goal is to have an effective meeting. We still want to have, we still want to have an opportunity for the public to comment. That's going to be up to the chair, who's going to, in all likelihood, be the mayor, to encourage the audience to make comments that are, you know, that are appropriate to the agenda. I mean, I didn't want to open up a whole can of worms here talking about public comment. We've always allowed public comment at public meetings.
And I think we received feedback from both City Council members and Planning Commission members in the past that the hour-long, you know, six to 7:00 PM meeting on a Monday night before the regularly scheduled City Council meeting just wasn't enough time to have an effective meaningful...
Oh, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with that. No, we needed more time, absolutely.
Perhaps, perhaps the reason we didn't, the public comment didn't come up previously is because there was a planning, a City Council meeting scheduled after, so anyone who wanted to publicly comment would stay for that. So, but we have to allow public comment. If we were having an open meeting, we have to allow public comment.
Okay, okay.
Well, I look at it as a workshop, so we get something really done, and at past workshops, we've had with the city management, City Council, Planning Commission, we've had all the yellow-posted things on the wall, we kind of focus in on some real goals, and so it's a meaningful result.
Right, but what are the, I mean, I haven't seen an agenda, so what should I be prepared to come and discuss?
You should be prepared to talk about transitions and neighborhood nodes and the impacts that these developments are having on abutting properties.
All right, so that's the subject matter.
Yes.
Transition and neighborhood nodes, okay.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, the only thing, anybody else? Before I close, I have one quick comment. Today was the competition for Future City, all our Future City planners, and I was totally blown away. It was just a very impressive showing. These are middle school and elementary school kids, and the theme was water management. Phil Senzic would have really loved this event. They came up with some really creative solutions. I'll just mention one that just kind of stood out. This one group, as far as they decide they're going to be in California, they're taking salt water instead of going through these energy-demanding systems of heating the water and turning it into steam and desalination, all that. They said just run a pipe down to the hot area of the earth and let the steam come out, and then take that with very little, no pumping needed, and then take that steam and turn it into fresh water. I thought it was terrific. But those are the kind of young ideas that were presented, and I just can't feel better about passing the baton to the next generation. With that, we're closed.